Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 1st Town Council Meeting. We're glad to see everyone here tonight. As a reminder, I want to ask that everyone please silence their mobile devices while the council, in the council chambers, and we thank you for your cooperation on that. Would the town clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton is not with us right now. He'll be here presently.
No Councilmember Singleton is not. He's gonna be a little late this evening. And we ask that the council member, one of the council members provide a motion for the absence of Mayor Gupta. He is out on a scheduled leave and will ask for a motion for his excused absent.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been properly made and seconded that Mayor Gupta's absence for his vacation, that excuse absent, has been properly made and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion, prepare to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Vote carries unanimously. If there's anyone here to speak during the public hearings later in the agenda, please sign in with the town clerk in the rear. We greatly appreciate that. Now we shall have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation given to us by Councilman Phil Matthews. We ask that you please all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in our town, Lord, thanking you for another day of gift of life. Lord, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy and as we remember the military that have paid the supreme sacrifices for it. Lord, we ask a blessing on our police and fire and all of our emergency services as they protect us throughout the year. Lord, we ask that you be with our town council tonight as we deliberate the issues that will concern our community. Grant us wisdom and grant us understanding and be with us this evening, and we give you the glory in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Now to petitions and comments. Has anyone signed up for to speak this evening?
Yes, Bryce Owens.
Okay. And as Mr. Owens comes forward, this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda regarding matters relative to town, town policy or business on subjects within the town council's real or parent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokesperson must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but will not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics regarding requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be subject to for a future agenda. Mr. Bryce, will you please state your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Bryce Owens. I live at 416 Lone Pipe Pine Loop in Fuquay Varina, but I'm here representing Garner Baseball Incorporated, and we're at 417 West Main Street, right across the street in downtown Garner. I'm the current president of GBI, and just to give you a quick history, this is our 70th year of providing baseball for the youth of Garner and the Triangle area. We're one of the few remaining parent-run volunteer-based organizations still around. This season, we're gonna have 488 rec baseball players in our league, up from 287 back in 2020. These players range in age from four to 18 years of age and make up 45 rec teams this season. We also have seven travel teams ranging in age from eight to 15 years old, and I'm here tonight because GBI and the families we represent need your help. We have two issues we are asking the town to help solve. First, our Pony Cult League, which is comprised of 13 to 18-year-olds, uses North Garner Middle School's baseball field. Part of our community partner agreement is for GBI to maintain that field in exchange for our usage. Last fall, we had 110 players in that league. Again, these are 13 to 18-year-olds coming to Garner. Our league is really the only of its kind anywhere around in the Triangle for this age group. Not only did we serve the teens of Garner, but those of surrounding towns municipalities, there were 16 different municipalities that participated in our league. These players require a full-size baseball field with bases set at 90 feet and a pitching mound at 60 feet 6 inches. And with the impending construction at North Garner Middle School, we're gonna lose that field as early as the fall of 2025. Currently, the only town field able to be set to those dimensions is Garner Rec Park 1. GBI only has access to that field on Friday nights. Currently, that field is being utilized by Garner Sports League, who does not have any recreational players who need that size field. However, they, like GBI, have travel ball teams who need that size field, and they get access six days a week for those two to three teams to practice. And outside of that, they utilize it how they see fit. We need access to that field or another solution in the fall to provide this group of players the opportunity to continue playing baseball. We're asking for your help in finding a solution we can all work with. Again, we have 100 players, teenagers, who otherwise would have nowhere to play baseball this fall. And this leads me to my second ask of the council, which is to put together a team to work together to reallocate the town of Garner baseball fields. Currently, the field allocation is outdated and not representative of current registration numbers. More importantly, we can do better to serve the citizens of Garner. As the boom happens in Garner over the next few years, getting in front of this is imperative. Through both of our requests, we're looking for common sense solutions. Over the past weeks and months, I've had a chance to meet with Mayor Gupta and Town Manager Miller, Maria, Jack, and Zach from the Parks and Rec Department, and most recently with Matt Davis, Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Council. While all those meetings were amicable, we are rapidly approaching a time where we won't have the fields necessary to serve our constituents and the families of Garner. I've shared an information packet with the council members via email. It will give you more information about GBI and the current field allocation. In addition, I'd certainly like to invite you all to our opening day on April 12th at 11:30. Many of you have already responded, and we look forward to seeing you out there to watch some of the best rec baseball around. Lastly, congratulations to Police Chief Smith on her retirement. Thank you for all your years of service to Garner, and thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bryce, for all that you've done for the community. Is there anyone else?
No one else has signed up for petitions and comments.
Okay. Now we're down to adoption of the agenda. I ask the council for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and properly seconded to adopt the agenda. Prepare to vote. Any discussion? Prepare to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now we're down to the presentation. We are coming to a part of the presentation which is very special with the town, with the recognition of one of our key employees. All employees are important, and with this resolution of 2025-2647, we're recognizing the retirement of Police Chief Lori Smith for her 28 years of dedicated service to the town of Garner. Chief Smith's retirement date is effective May 1st, 2025, and I ask that Councilman Matthews, please read the resolution.
Chief Smith, would you please join me? I promised her I would not embarrass her. I've been known to stretch it a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's truly an honor to do presentations, but this one is especially meaningful since so many of us up here have had a great relationship with Chief Smith and the things she's done. It's been a pleasure to watch her through her entire career. I remember back when I was a volunteer fireman and her wonderful husband, we had first responders, the very first class, and he was our instructor, and little did I know that he was gonna meet her and they would fall in love, and the rest is history. Congratulations, Eric. Resolution, whereas Lori Smith first served the town Garner as a police officer in the police department when she was hired on August 25th, 1997, whereas Chief Smith was elevated to Police Officer 2 effective August 25, 2000, and whereas Chief Smith was elevated to Sergeant effective July 12, 2004, whereas Chief Smith was elevated to Lieutenant effective March 3rd, 2015, whereas Chief Smith was elevated to Captain on October 2nd, 2017, and she was elevated to Chief effective December 15, 2021. Whereas with over 28 years of service to the town, Chief Smith has served professionally and unselfishly in her capacity for the good of the town of Garner, making sacrifices in personal and family ties. Whereas, under Chief Smith's leadership, the Garner Police Department received its 10th Calea accretion for a total of 30 years that the Garner Police Department has been accredited. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Garner, North Carolina, that Lori Smith is hereby officially commended by this council on behalf of the citizens of Garner for valuable and outstanding service rendered to the town of Garner in her official capacity as chief with the Town of Garner Police Department. Be it further resolved that this resolution is made a part of permanent records of the town of Garner and a copy presented to Lori Smith this first day of April 2025. Son, Buddy Gupta, Mayor, Town of Garner. Congratulations, Chief.
And Chief Smith, Chief Smith, before you say anything, we'd like to have the Town Manager, Ms. Jody Miller, to make a few staff presentations to you.
Mr. Mayor Protam, if I could ask council to officially take the vote on the resolution?
Okay.
And then we can proceed with the remarks.
All right. Hearing the resolution 2025, 2025-2647 being read in your hearing, are we prepared to receive a motion to receive the move?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to receive resolution 2025-264. Prepare to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Now we should have a presentation from the Town Manager, Ms. Jody Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and members of council and everyone who's joined us this evening. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Chief Smith on her retirement from the town of Garner. I first got to know Chief Smith about three years ago, and she was doing my background check for when, before I was offered a job here with the town of Garner. And I remember she called me and was trying to set up a time to go over some paperwork, and it was right during the holidays, and I seemed a little standoffish. I was like, well, I can schedule this, but I'd really like to know the timing of this. And she kinda was like, well, this is kinda strange, but okay. One of the reasons I wanted to do that was I hadn't told my employer at the time that I potentially was leaving, and I wanted to make sure I had an opportunity to talk with them. And Chief Smith, she actually called me back at home and she said, oh, I just realized why you were being so cagey almost about setting this up because you were so mindful about wanting to have an opportunity to share with your current employer. And it meant a lot to me that she called me at home and said, oh, I get it. I realize this is important to you, and I wanna make sure you have the time to notify your employer and share your information with who you'd want to. And I knew from that experience, this was a person I'd like to work with at the Town of Garner, and she's been that way ever since. She cares about this community. She cares about her staff. She wants to make this community a safe place for all our residents to enjoy, and she's been a true leader in our community, within our organization. So I just wanted to say congratulations, Chief Smith, and thank you for your service. It's meant a lot. You've made a difference in this community and with the police department.
And at this time, I'd like the council, if they have anything, I'd like to say about to Chief Smith at this time, we ask that you go ahead and do so. Councilman Dillinger?
Don't go. That's my only comment. Don't go. But no, seriously, congratulations. Well deserved. You're serving in a long line of excellent leaders in this town and that department, and it's, it's a great feeling sitting up here to go out there and say, we're proud of our police department and everything that you do, and you've been a part of that from day one, so thank you.
Yes, sir. My family and I moved to Garner several years ago, and a few years after that, I met Chief Smith. She was in Lori somebody else. It wasn't Smith, was it? I don't even remember what it was. But she became involved in the Community Watch and working on teaching people in the neighborhoods how to be aware of what's going on around them, and she was always there whenever we called, whenever we needed her. We always got a response. One time, I met her in the parking lot behind the Avery Street Gym. Don't remember what we were talking about, but I remember she started talking under her breath, and she was saying, don't you stop here, you just keep on going. She had seen someone driving down the street, looking around. She knew who it was, and they didn't belong in Garner. And so then I knew, I knew it before, but I knew it even more then, that we had just an excellent police officer who cared about us and was always gonna be there for us and always aware of what's going on in Garner. So I commend you for your long career. I'm glad that you are getting to go on and do something else, and we will miss you terribly, but we still have your phone number.
Chief Lori, it's been a pleasure working with you all this time, and you know, being an old retired Army officer, when you see that career progression, that ain't bad, any way you look at it. You went out on top, and your successor will have some hard shoes to fill on who that's gonna be. Some of us might presume, we don't know. That's up to the town manager, and she'll make that decision, but it'll be a great opportunity. And we appreciate the fine job of leadership and leading our police department where it is today, and we're growing by leaps and bounds, and we've got the best of the best. And I kid, I said, every police officer you hire is a defensive lineman or offensive lineman. They're all getting that big, and, but, but we have great police officers, and I'd like to say on behalf of this board, we've got your back, no matter whatever you need, we got your back, because you guys are the best, and unlike some communities, we're here for you. So keep that in mind. And the interim chief, I think he will do a fine job, so congratulations, Eric. I'm gonna turn the mic finally over to you.
Well, Chief, I would like to say before you say anything, I would say thank you so much for your service, and I will never forget how you gave me the eye one day. You thought I was somebody who shouldn't be in some place, and you gave me, you got my attention that day.
Couldn't see.
She said she couldn't see me. I think she saw me clearly. She just recognized me at the time. But thank you so much for the tremendous service that you have rendered to the town, and as has been said, I quote, I just, you will be missed. You definitely will be missed with the, with your leadership style and with your tough nurturing style, I would say, and I wish you the best, and, and as, in your future endeavors, I hope that everything works out extremely well for you. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
It's your turn.
I'm gonna keep this brief. I just wanted to say thank you to the council members. I tell people all the time how blessed and fortunate I am to work in this community, not only be part of it, but get to work here. It makes such a huge difference when you have the support of our council and our town leadership. This job would, it's difficult as it is, but I couldn't imagine doing it under different circumstances, so thank you all. Several of you, I've known the majority of my career, Ms. Behringer. I think the relationships that I've been able to develop and maintain over the years is what's helped me be successful and what's helped our community and our department continue to grow and be successful. Chief Moss is in the back. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for taking a chance on a 23-year-old, I think I just told my age, a 23-year-old naive, young officer a long time ago. I've had a tremendous career, and I wouldn't be here if it weren't for you, so thank you. Dana, thank you for your guidance and mentorship and friendship all these years. You've been part of my, a big part of my career for what, the last 22 years, so thank you again. We wouldn't be where we are as a department if it weren't for you. Chief Benz, thank you for your support over the years, being able to work as peers and then work for you as chief at the end of your career as well. Rodney Dickerson, I wanna say thank you. Thank you for taking a chance on me and believing in me to give me this opportunity to continue to serve my community. I hope I've made you proud. Last but not least, and I can't look at him, is my husband. I'm not gonna cry. I know you're trying. Is my husband Eric. Statistically speaking, I should be on what, like my third divorce, something like that by now, but you've stuck with me through it all, and I absolutely would not be here if it weren't for you and your support throughout the years. You're my rock, and I love you and I appreciate you. And my friends, Walton Gertie in the back, thanks for coming and supporting me, and then our staff in the back. Deputy Chief Adams is gonna make an excellent interim chief, and Captain Medlin and Lieutenant Rose, they're excellent leaders, so I wouldn't leave if, if I didn't think this police department was in great hands, and they, I can assure you, it is in great hands, so thank you and I appreciate it.
Yes. I'd like to stand up, stand up, opportunity for those who like to say a few words. You, you don't wanna say anything? If not, then, okay.
And I know it's April Fools, but I'm really retiring.
Okay.
Would you like to come up for a picture with me, honey?
Okay. So Rick, you want everyone to come, Rick?
All the council, all the council members.
All the council members come down too? Okay.
Yeah.
I think Chief should stand about.
Now Chief Smith is still up there. We recognize the Garner Police Department for the 10th reaccreditation with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, and now we shall recognize Manager Miller to make a, make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Vance. I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Smith to, to talk about the reaccreditation process.
Mayor Protam Vance, members of council, thank you. I'm gonna keep this brief, but I did wanna share some, some great news with you all. Like you said, we just, myself, Manager Miller, and Ms. Dana Clay, the department's accreditation manager, had the privilege and opportunity to travel to Garden Grove, California a couple weeks ago to attend the 2025 Spring Calea Conference. This was a significant accomplishment for us because it was not only our 10th reaccreditation, but it signifies 30 years of accreditation for the Garner Police Department. That is huge, and I'm also very pleased too to, again, recognize Chief Moss because we became accredited under his, under his tenure here at the police department, so this is a significant accomplishment. I wanna talk briefly about Calea, just for those in the audience who may not understand what that is and what it means and the significance it has for the town and for the police department and, and for our community. So a Calea is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It's created in 1979 as a credentialing authority through the joint efforts of law enforcement's major executive associations, such as the International Associations of Chiefs of Police, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Sheriff's Association, and the Police Executive Research Forum. The purpose of Calea's accreditation programs is to improve the delivery of public safety services, primarily by maintaining services, primarily by maintaining a body of standards developed by public safety practitioners covering a wide range of up-to-date public safety initiatives, establishing and administering an accreditation process and recognizing professional excellence. Specifically, Kalia's goals are to strengthen crime prevention and control capabilities, to formalize essential management procedures, and establish fair and non-discriminatory personnel practices. It improves service delivery, solidifies inter-agency cooperation and coordination, and increases community and staff confidence in the agency. The Kalia accreditation process is a proven, modern management model that presents the chief executive officer with a blueprint that promotes the efficient use of resources that again, improves service delivery, regardless of the size, geographic location, or functional responsibilities of the agency. Mind you too, this is a, it's a voluntary program, and so this is something that the town of Garner and the Garner Police Department has chosen to participate in for 30 years. So what are the benefits of, of accreditation? So what does that mean for the town and for the community? It helps control liability insurance costs, makes it easier for agencies to purchase liability insurance, it allows us to increase the limit of our insurance coverage more easily, and it also often results in lower premiums. It provides stronger defense against lawsuits and citizen complaints. Most often, when people find out you're an accredited agency, it serves as a deterrent, not always, but most of the time. It provides greater accountability within the agency. The accreditation standards give the CEO a proven management system of written directives, and we have a strong set of written directives. Provides for sound training, clearly defined lines of authority, and routine reports that support decision-making and resource allocation. It's also supported by government officials because it provides objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. It also helps increase community advocacy and helps improve employee morale. So I just want to take this opportunity again to thank Chief Moss for his vision so many years ago to bring us into accreditation, and for Ms. Clay, if you'll stand up. I know, I'm going to put you on the spot. So Dana has been with us since May of 2003, and she served of our, served as our accreditation manager since then. Dana retired about four years ago, but then came back in a supplemental role to help us through this last four-year cycle. She is phenomenal. She's well-respected and well-known across the nation, not only for her experience with Kalia, but also with her experience with Power DMS. And I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank you for your hard work and dedication over the years. Our department wouldn't be where we are without you. So there's some big shoes to fill coming up, because Dana too, is going to retire finally, as of this week, so we're parting ways about the same time. But we have a good plan in place and a, a successor that's finishing training, so we're, we're still in good hands. So I just want to say thank you, Dana. And I also just want to, lastly, thank council for your support, your continued support in funding this process that we go through. I tell you all the time that we're a professional organization. We have excellent men and women, both sworn and civilian, that work for our department. And this is in large part because of our accreditation status. It helps keep us honest and make sure that we maintain best industry standards, so thank you.
And thank you, Chief Smith, and to the, to the, to the department. And I'd like to invite you down for, Chief, and the police department down for photos with, with Rick here, please.
All of them? Bring them over.
Thank you very much, everyone, and you're more than welcome to stay for the continuing of the agenda. And if, we will allow you opportunity to depart at this time if you so desire. And as everyone is leaving, we're moving down to our consent agenda. If no council member desires to remove any items from the consent agenda, ask for a motion to receive the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to accept the consent agenda of their discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Moving right along to the public hearing. Tonight's public hearings include a quasi-judicial hearing for a special use permit which requires sworn testimony, and three legislative hearings for annexations which do not require sworn testimony. However, all persons interested in speaking must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant. And other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. The first case we'll have is special use permit is SP 2304. Involves an application for a special use permit which requires a quasi-judicial hearing. Each member is, each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to hearing that is not subject to change, had an ex parte communications, any close familiar business, familiar business, or other associational relationship with an affected person or financial interest in the outcome of the case. Has any, has anyone had any of those? None? Moving forth, this is a fact finding hearing and only confident material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witness based on training and expert experience may testify as to the impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. All person wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn by the town clerk. Please proceed to the back corner of the room to be sworn in. All being properly sworn in, the staff is offered as evidence in the case and will be accepted into the record unless on objection is, unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person with standing. Mr. Joseph Linsky will be presenting for the town.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, council members. I'm Joseph Linsky in our planning department, here to present SUP, SP 2304 Wilmington Road Industrial. So the applicant is Wilmington Road Partners, and they are requesting special use approval for two industrial buildings that total just over 293,000 square feet on a tract that's 59 acres, and the site area is a little over 36 acres. It's on Wilmington Road, near Calabar Street. The zoning is heavy industrial. Currently, it's a vacant property. This is the next phase of the Beacon Commerce Park project, for those who are familiar. The site is surrounded by RA, rural agricultural zoning, and it does have water available at the site, and sewer will be extended there from a close connection. And after the first review of the special use site plan, it was determined, because they would be building a right-of-way through the property, that they did have to submit a major subdivision as well too. So SB 24006 has been approved by staff preliminarily. Context for the comprehensive plan, it does align well with, with what the comp plan proposes in terms of our framework and land character type with boat, with boat, which boat, excuse me, point towards employment center uses there, and it does fall within a, a proposed employment center area around Jones Sausage and, and Amazon and Beacon Commerce Park around there. For their neighborhood meetings, they did have one before this middle of their application on August 30th, 2023, and had eight people in attendance there. And then their most recent one was December 17th, 2024, with five people in attendance. Here's a graphic of the site plan to give you an idea. So on the north side, you'll see that road there is new public right-of-way that they will be building through the site, and off of it will be constructing two industrial warehouse buildings immediately south. The third lot there on the north is for the primary SCM that'll service both of the buildings. And going back to Stormwater there, there are three total retention ponds between the three different properties there that will be retaining for the 1, 10, and 25-year storms, and they do have a nitrogen offset payment as well. For landscaping and buffers, they do meet our requirements for total tree canopy coverage. So the minimum for an industrial site here ranges between 12 and 14%, depending on how much you're retaining. They're providing, or retaining over 19% and adding a little or close to 2%, but the total of 21 and a half percent for the whole site. And they do have street trees along the new right-of-way as well as Wilmington Road, and there are some areas where there are overhead utility lines where they do them every 30 feet as opposed to every 40 feet. The perimeter buffers are around the whole site and are 55 feet on the north and the south, and those are type D, which is our most dense buffer type. And they did conduct a tree survey, so they're using, you know, they're, they're counting their preserved trees in those areas, and then will be adding to them to fill in to meet the type D density. In terms of lighting, so they did provide lighting for both the, the site plan, which would cover all the parking areas for these two warehouses, and then along the right-of-way too, for the subdivision, that new street will also be lit as a part of that plan. For building design, they do meet our transparency and glazing requirements per 923 of our UDO. There are a lot of exemptions for industrial buildings here, so a lot of it does not apply, but they, they did meet our requirements in that regard. For parking, so they did break it down by the use of the building specifically, so that being the warehouse, and then both of them have office spaces as well too, so different calculations for each of those two, two spaces. Required, they required to have 134 total spaces, and they're proposing 235. And they do leave a little room in front of the front building closer to Wilmington for future space where they could add parking if it was needed for a tenant in the future. The site plan was reviewed for fire requirements, including access for emergency vehicles, and it was, it does meet our spacing requirements for hydrants as well too. For utilities, as I said, there, there is water along Wilmington Road there, and then the sewer, the eight-inch sewer main will be extended, I believe, from Calabar Street. So it does meet City Rowley's requirements for both. And in terms of transportation, the, the new public right-of-way will be 1,100 feet long extending from Wilmington, and it'll have frontage improvements along Wilmington as well, including right-of-way dedication, widening, sidewalk, and curb and gutter, all which were reviewed and do meet the standards of the UDO and the engineering manual. Environmentally, if you look at the map there, you'll see there is a pretty wide FEMA flood plane on the site that also has our 50-foot conservation buffers. So they are grading pretty close to it, but they are not crossing it. You'll see the site does stop short of, of the, you know, crossing the entire FEMA flood plane there, but they may have to obtain state permitting for any impacts they have there. And that leads us to our conditions of approval, which there are nine in total. I won't go over each one, but I will note that number six, we did have an amendment that you might have been informed of. The major subdivision plan does need to be constructed prior to the first building's certificate of occupancy, so that was amended from the initial staff report, so I did just want to point that out for you. I'll refer you to page 41 of your, of your packet, and we'll take any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Are there any questions from the council, starting with Mr. Matthews?
None at this time.
Single?
No, sir. None at this time.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Linsky, now we shall recognize the applicant. Please step forth and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Isabel Maddox. My address is 3700 Glenwood Avenue, Suite 500. I'm with the law firm of Nichols and Crampton. I'm here tonight representing Wilmington Road Partners. The principals, two principals of that group are here tonight, Greg Sandroder and John Core are both here, and I also have a team of experts, James Whitaker, our civil engineer, Richard Adams, our traffic engineer, and Frank Leatherman, our appraiser. You know, with, with a special use permit, there's a criteria in the Garner Code under 4.7.1.1D, sub-items A through H, and there are various findings that you as town council have to make in order to issue the special use permit. We're going to provide you substantial competent and material evidence that will allow you to, to have, to make those findings. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to call each of our experts up, and different ones are going to speak to different ones of the criteria, and I also have affidavits for each one of them, so it will be reduced to writing, but I'm going to let them speak to you in, in real words, and you'll be able to ask them questions if you want to. And, you know, the, so we have a traffic engineer speaks to the traffic-oriented questions, our civil will speak to, he'll, he'll do the heavy lifting, because that encompasses most of the issues. And then we'll have an appraiser to speak to, to value issues and also to, you know, how the, this use fits into the neighborhood. The first person I'm going to call up though is Greg Sandroder, who is a professional developer in one of the ownership group, and he's going to speak to you about one of the criteria, but also just give you a general greeting tonight from the developer. So Mr. Sandroder, would you come forward?
Isabel, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for hearing our case tonight. We're very grateful to you for doing so. I'm Greg Sandroder. I'm Greg Sandroder. I reside at 104 Lake Cliff Court in Cary, and I'm a member of the development ownership team. As was, as Joe mentioned earlier, this is the third phase of a three-phase project that we call Beacon Commerce Park. We have been involved in all three phases. We've gone through two special use permits. This is our third special use permit for our third phase before you tonight. One of the elements that I'd like to address, as Isabel had just mentioned, was the specific required finding 4.7.1.1H, which requires a level of adequate assurance that the property will be continually and properly maintained at good standards once it's completed. And so as a member of the development team and as the ownership group, I'd just like to confirm that indeed upon completion of the project, that we will employ on a continual basis competent professional property management to keep the area clean, safe, well-appointed for employees, guests, and the citizens in general. And so with that, that concludes my remarks. Isabel?
That's the last of the criteria, but I wanted Greg to come up first, just kind of give you an overview. To get into the real nitty-gritty of these various regulations, I'll now call James Whitaker, our civil engineer, and he'll go through a number of points that relate to the different criteria. And starting with, you know, the, and let me, my, do I, I just want to advance my slides Not sure I, not sure I can, help me operate. Okay, okay, that tells you the expert witnesses, and then. Did something wrong?
Error to the right.
Okay, okay. All right, so here are the required findings, and let me just go through these briefly. The first is the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety, and James is going to speak to that. The second is the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property, and our appraiser Frank Leatherman will speak to that. The third one is, if completed as proposed, the development will comply with all developments of the ordinance, and James Whitaker, our civil, will speak to that. The fourth one is the proposed use is consistent with the town's adopted transportation plans, other relevant adopted plans, the stated purpose and intent of this UDO, and the fact that the use is permitted under certain circumstances creates a rebuttable presumption that the proposed use is in harmony. So we'll still give you testimony about those things. That will be a combination of James Whitaker, our civil engineer, and Richard Adams, our traffic engineer. The fifth criterion is the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent uses, and that'll be Frank Leatherman, our appraiser, and then in the proximate neighborhood in terms of building scale, site design. There are also some issues that James will speak about in that one. And one of those requirements in that particular criterion is traffic generation. Again, Richard will speak about that, Richard Adams. The next one is any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts on the natural environment like the creek, et cetera. And James will speak to that, James Whitaker. G is public safety, transportation, and utility will be available to serve the property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for the rest of the town. James will speak to aspects of that, and Richard Adams, our traffic engineer, will speak to others. And then Greg has just spoken to the final criterion, which is adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. So those are the criteria, and I'm going to give you the site, and I'll let James, if you want to use that slide or of the town, you can, you can go to that point. All right. Take it away, James.
Good evening. My name is James Whitaker with Advanced Civil Design, address is 51 Kilmain Drive in Cary. It's a pleasure to be with you again tonight. It's been a little while since we've been here, but it's nice to be back. Isabel stated, I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of North Carolina, have over 25 years' experience as a project designer, manager, and also a surveyor in the state of North Carolina. I did previously work on the two prior SGP plans that were approved in front of you. And so this, as Greg mentioned, this will be the third one that you'll see, very similar to what was done along Jones Sausage. So as I mentioned, I did prepare the site plan. In my professional opinion, the site plan meets all the requirements for a special use plan under Section 4.7.4 of the UDO. Site can, site plan complies with the buffering requirements, and this also goes into the, you know, the harmony with the adjacent properties. Site plan does have a 55-foot buffer, as Mr. Linsky mentioned. We've got 5.926 acres of open space on the site, and we are preserving 280,000 square feet of trees areas on the site. We're also providing a 15-foot buffer along the proposed streets and along the existing Wilmington Road frontage. As previously mentioned, all utilities on the site plan will connect to City of Raleigh Public Sewer and Water through existing infrastructure, and that will not place any undue burden on the existing infrastructure. Regarding the road improvements, there is a proposed road that will service the site and extend to the west. This is a 32-foot-wide pavement section road with sidewalk on both sides, which meets the typical sections in the Garner UDO. Along with that, a 12-inch public water line will be extended, and it'll also have street trees along the road. And then we also be, we'll be widening Wilmington Road to what, to one-half of what will be the ultimate section for Wilmington Road, which, which is a 49-foot-wide pavement section, and we'll also be providing street trees along Wilmington Road.
Sorry about that. I thought the site plan was in there. This town probably had.
The site's not located in a watershed protection area, and the site plan does meet all stormwater requirements of the Garner UDO. We've been working closely with staff on that. The stormwater wet retention ponds will treat the impervious area for both nitrogen and the water quality. The proposed use is compatible with the existing previously approved warehouse developments along Jones Sausage Road and the Amazon Distribution Center. Any adverse impacts on adjacent residential uses and/or the natural environment will be mitigated through the buffers that I previously mentioned, setbacks, lighting controls, and also our stormwater control measures that are shown on the site plan. It is my professional opinion that the site plan will not endanger public health or safety, and also that the site plan is consistent with the spirit and purpose of the UDO. The subject property is zoned heavy industrial, which allows for a variety of uses, including our warehouse use that is proposed. There was no rezoning needed for this development. UDO Section 4.7.4D, I, or I'm sorry, 1D, the site plan consists, is consistent with the goals of the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. As Mr. Linsky mentioned, this area is designated as a regional employment center, which does include, you know, light industrial and warehouse uses as we have proposed here. And then just lastly, you know, the site, the site will use Jones Sausage Roads as a resource and enhance the northeast gateway of Garner. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions later on.
Any questions for Mr. Whitaker?
Thank you.
Next, I would call Richard Adams, Kimberly Horn, to speak.
Good evening, Richard Adams. I'm a senior project manager with Kimberly Horn at 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I am a licensed professional engineer here in North Carolina. I have approximately 29 years' experience traffic engineering in North Carolina, predominantly in the Triangle area, and many municipalities, including, of course, the town of Garner. So a little background, we evaluated the site plan, including buildings A and B for Wilmington Road Industrial LLC, SUP, SP 23-04. My focus, our focus was on the traffic, of course, and transportation. Specifically, we conducted, in 2019, we conducted a Traffic Impact Analysis, or TIA, for what was then called the Doggett Site. That included the entirety of Beacon Commerce Park and this area we're talking about tonight. So it included all phases of the larger Beacon Commerce Park area. We evaluated peak hours, AM rush hour and the PM rush hour. That study was reviewed and approved by the town of Garner and NCDOT. We conducted additional analyses, addenda to that study in 2021 and 2023. Those studies were done to reflect minor changes in building layout or square footage. They resulted in no changes or recommendations, no changes in the recommendations, and both of those addenda were reviewed and approved by the town and NCDOT at the time. Off-site infrastructure, as you probably know, have been built, including various roadway and signal improvements related to Beacon Commerce Park, including the realignment of Calabar and Wilmington, and the signal, the signal access for Calabar, and the new signal access for Beacon Commerce Park with, of course, Amazon on the other side. And it should be noted, talking about signalization, one of the great things about those signal access points is signal timing is something that can be adjusted in coordination with North Carolina DOT should traffic change over time. So that's one of the nice flexibility items we have. And the proposed SGP we're talking about tonight includes all, including all the access points and improvements associated with it are consistent with the previous reports and analyses that we prepared. So regarding findings of facts required tonight, for UDO Section 4.7.4D1D, it's my professional opinion that the site plan is consistent with the transportation plan and other relevant adopted plans and policies and the stated purpose and intent of the UDO. And as part of that, I would state that the overall project involves construction of the proposed street, as already been mentioned, through the property connecting Wilmington, connecting to Wilmington Road, consistent with the town of, town's Garner Forward Transportation Plan. That street will have a 55-foot right-of-way and 32 feet from back of curve to back of curb, consistent with the town's major local street cross-section. The site will access that road by two access points, and improvements in access points, in my professional opinion, will provide adequate, acceptable overall traffic safety conditions in the area. And regarding UDO Section 4.7.4D1E, it's my professional opinion that the project and site plan are compatible with adjacent uses in terms of traffic generation. Regarding UDO Section 4.7.4D1G, it's my professional opinion that the existing transportation network, together with the planned road improvements, will be sufficient to serve the project, including the buildings shown on the site plan, at acceptable levels of service. Such buildings will have minimal impact on the roadway network and will not interfere with public safety and transportation services available to existing development. Previous improvements to Wilmington Road, Jones Sausage Road, and Calabar Street, together with the proposed street, will adequately accommodate traffic generated by the site. That ends my prepared remarks. Happy to answer questions now or later. Thank you.
Mr. Dilinger? Isabel, a question for the intersection of Calabar and Jones Sausage. What's the current service level and then the predicted impact?
Yes. That, I have that, and it's in various reports, so if you'll bear with me for a moment, I'll make sure I get you the latest one. Let's see. Yeah, we are showing that build-out, a full build-out with, with the project would have a level service B as in boy in the AM and PM peak hour for the intersection of Jones Sausage Road at Calabar Street, and then Amazon on the other side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barringer? Anybody else have any questions?
You said it would be level source, the build-out would be B, level source would be B?
Yes, sir.
As in boy.
Yes, sir. B as in boy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Frank Leatherman, MAI Appraiser, to speak to issues regarding values and compatibility with the area.
Good evening. My name is Frank Leatherman. My office is at 4,006 Barrett Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina. I operate Leatherman Real Estate Services. I've been in business for 34 years, and I was asked to look at the impact of this particular project. And I did it. Went out and looked at the property and looked at the site map and that type of stuff, and then I found two, two areas that I studied. One was over on, off of Tanglewood Pine Lane, which actually backs up to Trademark Drive, which is over at Pool Road. There were industrial uses bounded by residential houses. And then I compared them to the houses across the street that backed up in a regular neighborhood setting. And interestingly enough, the houses that backed up to the industrial users sold for a little bit more per square foot over time compared to the houses across the street in the neighborhood themselves. I also looked at the Brownlee Business Park, which has industrial uses with residential backing up to it, and the same result occurred where the houses that backed up to the industrial uses sold for just a little bit more than the houses that were across the street in the, directly in the neighborhood. And you may want to know, why would that be the case? But when you interview people, a lot of times, they prefer to have a, what's, I guess, a less intense use behind them is how they generally say it, because you have a buffer yard on all of these properties where the houses back up to a buffer instead of backing up directly to another residential user. And so it's, it has, over the years, I've seen that to be a common occurrence. So in my opinion, I think this property will not significantly or adversely affect any of the surrounding properties in any negative way. And I've provided y'all have a copy of the study, so if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Leatherman.
I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Leatherman. In your opinion, do you think the, the proposed project that we're talking about tonight will be compatible with the neighborhood in which it's located?
Well, it is compatible because it's in an area where there's development, as y'all can see from the map, it's just going to be a continuation of the existing uses that are already there, and it's surrounded by vacant land at this time as well.
Okay. And you think that the buffers, looking towards the future, the buffers that are going to be provided will adequately mitigate the impacts for adjacent properties?
Well, I think they certainly would do that. As a matter of fact, they're, they're larger than you've seen, you know, in the last few years, the buffer requirements have gotten larger. And so that just provides a bigger reduction from the adjoining use.
And you've looked at the other uses, which includes some other similar uses in the area?
That's correct.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to hand up affidavits from each of the, of the experts that, witnesses that testified, basically testifying to the same thing, I mean, in writing, giving you in writing the same things they testified to, also a study, compatibility study that Mr. Leatherman did. So I'd like to hand these up to the, to the attorney. And with that, that our testimonial and documentary And with that, that our testimonial and documentary evidence, I believe we have submitted competent material and substantial evidence to support each of the required findings that the, we were asking the town council make tonight and would support the issuance of a special use permit in this matter. And certainly I and any of my team are available to answer any questions that any of y'all might have.
Do we have any questions for the staff or for the applicant? At this time, I'd recognize any individuals who have signed up to speak and have sworn in at this time, who would like to speak from the audience on this, on this particular application?
There are no members of the public who signed up to speak tonight for this hearing.
You said not?
There, no one has signed up from the, from the public.
Any questions on the council? Now just close the, close the public hearing portion of this process and ask for a motion for this particular special use permit. And examples of the motions can be found on page 41 of your agenda.
Mr. Vance, I find that the application SUP SP 2404 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits identified in Article 4.7.4 D as in Delta. Therefore, I move that town council approve SUP SP 23-04 Wilmington Road Industrial with the six site-specific conditions recommended by the TRC to be listed on permit and prepared by staff.
Can I just qualify one of the conditions? We do accept the town's conditions and the first iteration of the conditions had one condition that we, we had negotiated a modification to. And that would be, yeah, but I just want to make sure what the town, the council is voting on tonight includes the amended condition. So they did agree to amend the condition number six?
Yes, they amended conditions in the packet now as it was republished.
Okay, good.
And then if, I can just clarify, there are actually nine enumerated conditions.
I amend that from eight to nine criteria. I will amend that from eight to nine criteria.
Motion has been made as a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, properly seconded, I prepare it for discussion. No discussion, I prepare the vote. All in favor, say by yea?
Yea, yes.
Those oppose? Yays have it. The motion passes. Now on to the next volunteer continuous annexation petition, ANX, ANX 24-019. I recognize Mr. Trezenberg to make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Pro-Tam Vance, council members. Yes, we have four annexation hearings for you tonight. And the first one is ANX 2419. For some people, probably affectionately called the Bojangles Annexation. But in all actuality, it is for their parcel as well as what will be another out parcel to the side. As you can see, part of the property actually is already in the corporate limits due to the, I won't say how old, because I don't know exactly how old it is, but the old alignment of, of Highway 50 and New Rand Road. And so that is a remnant of that. So this will bring in the remaining 4.12 acres. The annexation petition has been submitted by Triarc Food Systems. This is the one, I'm not sure if we had a representative here tonight or not. I wasn't able to confirm that. Doesn't look like I do.
No one has signed in.
Okay. But if there's any questions, I will be happy to answer them. This is contiguous to this current corporate limits, kind of right in the heart of town. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Do we have anyone on behalf of the applicant here to speak tonight? Any questions from council for Mr. Trezenberg? Do we have any, anybody from the audience who signed up to speak tonight on behalf?
No members of the public have signed up for this public hearing.
Again, any question, Mr. Trezenberg? To close the public hearing, I'd like to have a motion to, for this particular ordinance, ordinance 2025-5323.
So moved, second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Mr. Trezenberg, you're up again.
Yes, our second case tonight is ANX 25003 for the property at 500 North Greenfield Parkway. This property is also contiguous to the primary corporate limits of the town. It is 36.21 acres and does include some adjacent right-of-way, so all of North Greenfield Parkway will be in the corporate limits. This application was submitted by Jeremy Anderson of Thomason Hutton on behalf of Gregory Pool Equipment. Mr. Tim Brent with Longleaf Industrial is here tonight if you do have any questions. But again, staff would, would recommend adoption of the annexation.
Better recognize the applicant at this time? The applicant like to say anything tonight?
Oh, sir. Very good.
Okay. Do the council has any questions on Mr. Trezenberg or the applicant? Has anybody signed up to speak on this? Dick Liver?
No individuals have signed up to speak at this public hearing.
Okay. I close the public hearing. Ready to entertain a motion?
So moved, ordinance 2025-5325.
Motion, motion has been made and properly seconded. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, prepare the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose? Ayes have it. Motion passes. Mr. Trezenberg, you still up?
Our third of four cases tonight is annexation petition ANX 24022 for a property entitled Bagwell Farms. This is a satellite annexation. It is connected to existing satellite corporate limits, not terribly far from the primary corporate limits. And if we were to annex the remainder of the railroad property, it actually would, will make it contiguous to the primary corporate limits in the near future. This is 28.94 acres. The application was submitted on behalf of Ms. Brewer, Mr. Bagwell and the Bagwell Farms LLC. This is a project that is using existing zoning and has been under staff review. Just a little bit about that project, it is 107 duplex units. Case number SB 24008, if you're on the development map. Mr. Dan Servideo with Saxon Development is here tonight on behalf of the ownership group if you do have any questions for them. And just as a reminder, this is Auburn Station directly next door. And of course, the Auburn-Nightdale Garner Road intersection is just off the edge of this map. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise we do have the ordinance prepared for you to vote on.
Any question, Mr. Trezenberg? Is the applicant prepared to make a presentation tonight? Any questions at the council of the, Mr. Trezenberg or the applicant?
Yes. Can you pull up what is going to go here or is being proposed to go here?
While he's pulling it up, will you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, Daniel Servideo. My address, 1037 Park Ave, Hoboken, New Jersey.
Do we have anything like this in Garner right now? These duplexes, it doesn't?
I don't know that there's anything exactly like it that's new except for over at Auburn Village, they do have the duplex style units over there in part of the development. But this would be something that would further be very much different, diversified from things that we typically would see. Otherwise, most of the duplexes are older product.
What's the average square footage for one of these duplex units?
There's, there's a range from 1550 square feet up to 1900 square feet-ish, just roughly speaking.
And what is the range of anticipated sales price for these, are these for sale?
Uh, it's, it.
I'll ask that question.
Yeah, it's, it's not settled whether it's for sale or for rent. But the, we had a tax analysis done by Ryan Tax Consultants valuing the property at approximately $370,000 per unit. And that's per unit, not per duplex, so.
So per unit, 370, so we're talking 740 per duplex is what you're saying?
Yeah, that's correct, sir.
Okay. And are the duplexes, just curiosity, so each duplex is deeded separately, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
And this is wholly conforming with the R4 district, which it falls within.
Mr., of course, for Mr. Trezenberg, I know that we've explored the possibility of doing a fiscal analysis and service delivery analysis and on some of these projects and also looking at alternate uses, even I guess with the current zoning versus other zoning. Have we done that with this property yet?
So I think we're waiting on that tool to be kind of finalized. We're happy to do that once it is. But yeah, beyond that, we have not done that for this project at this point in time.
And the acreage on this is?
Is 28.94.
And the major thoroughfares are Auburn?
Auburn-Nightdale and it's at the corner of Auburn-Nightdale and Auburn Church.
I think it was Auburn Church and East Garner.
Oh, sorry, Auburn Church.
Yep, sorry.
Thank you. Get my Auburns confused in my head.
And can you pull that, Mr. Trezenberg, so the entrance will be off of the, to the east and an entrance?
Yeah, actually, both entrances are off of Auburn Church. DOT was not willing to give access off of East Garner that close to Auburn Church.
Okay. And this, this is just a connection, I'm looking at this thing on the east here, I reckon, what is it, just a stuff out there?
Yes, and a connection into Auburn Station.
Okay. So both the entrances are off Auburn Church, so the improvements we've made to Auburn Church Road?
Correct.
I can remember not long ago when Auburn Church Road was a dirt road, but that's a whole other story. I can, that's a back way you could go to go to Eagle Crest Golf Course.
Yep.
A long ways of time ago. Dirt roads, riding cars and wheelies spinning around anyway.
Yes.
Remember, it didn't seem that long ago. All right, thank you.
Time flies.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Matthews, any questions? Ms. Barringer?
Yeah, just other questions on the traffic impact analysis on east, on Garner Road? What were sort of the, what's the current service level or the current daily traffic volume of Garner Road?
I could just, we provided our traffic impact analysis to the NCDOT, received approval for the congestion management report, just effectively approving the entrances as, as drawn on this plan, just with the term length added.
I understand. What are the volumes on East Garner Road?
Lee is trying to bring that up, if we've got access to it. And I'm trying to recall if that was, if that TIA was something that we triggered or NCDOT just triggered on their own.
Yeah, I think it was a request from Garner after our pre-application meeting, so we, we had it done anyway.
Okay.
Right.
Taylor Howling said with Bolton Mink, I'm here on behalf of Will Swerengen, located at 418 South Dawson Street in downtown Raleigh. The T, this project was under the threshold for requiring a TIA. One was done by the developer anyways, it was submitted to DOT for their review. And as previously stated, everything falls in line with what was required. I was trying to pull up the TIA to look back at some numbers. It looked like the daily volume count was only around 750 some trips. I'm not sure exactly what the peak hour was.
And that, that was being added to what?
Yeah, but.
Is already there.
Yes.
Let me see if I can pull it up myself on DOT. I was, I intended to make a motion to postpone or keep this hearing open to get a little more information. I'm a little concerned with the density of the project.
So the daily traffic, yep, was 758 vehicles per day. Weekday peak hour trips were 12 entering, or in the morning, 12 entering, 37 exiting. And then the weekday PM peak hour trips were 35 entering and 25 exiting. Just based on previous experience, I don't think these trips are, you know, generate, those, those, those counts don't kind of trigger any red alarms for enormous amounts of traffic.
I still would like to answer my question because actually, if the traffic count is very low, we could actually get a higher density here and a higher quality product, maybe some multifamily, I don't know, because we don't have the traffic numbers to know what the capacity of the side roads are. This may not be dense enough, there may be something, if we're going to annex you into the town, we want the highest value product that we can get into the town.
Understood that the, this falls in line with the existing zoning of the property, the R4 zoning. And to the extent that we can maximize the, it's actually as close to the R4 as we could get, as well as the future land use plan identifies this as effectively exactly that zoning.
I still have some outstanding questions. I'd make a motion to keep this hearing open until our next council meeting to get some additional information.
Motion has been made by Mr. Dillinger to keep this. Say it again, please?
To keep the hearing open until our next meeting.
Keep the, to keep this hearing open until the next meeting? Is there?
No, okay.
Is there a second and not then? No second then, motion dies?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second? Not hearing one? Then the motion dies. Any more questions? More questions, anyone? Do we have anyone who's from the audience who wishes to speak on, on this particular No further questions, then we close the public hearing. No further questions, then we close the public hearing. And ask for motion for this particular annexation, five, three, two, four. Is there a motion from the council?
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty five, five, three, two, four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Ms. Behringer to approve ordinance two zero two five, five, three, two, four. Any discussion?
Yes, I'm going to vote against this annexation, and the reason is, we spend a lot of time in the town talking about cost of services. We talk about taxes, why they increase, why they don't increase. And then we want to turn around and let this product into the town without the analysis necessary to know whether or not this is going to dig the hole deeper or get us out of the hole. It's a prime opportunity to get more information to see if there's a possibility of getting a better product annexed into the town that has higher tax values, maybe higher density along corridors that have the transit capacity to handle higher density. I will be voting no on this because I think it is a terrible idea. That's my comment.
Okay, are there any more comments from the council? Are ready to vote, all in favor, but steady aye?
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
The motion passes with a four, four, one vote, motion passes. Next annexation, Mr. Trezenberg.
Yes, the fourth of four hearings tonight for annexations, this is annexation petition A, annex twenty five oh oh five, the overlook at Stony Creek. This project is contiguous to the primary corporate limits of Garner, just south and across the street from the VA Center. This is forty five point two eight acres. And LLC is the current owner under the umbrella of Lennar. This is a project, again, that is using the existing zoning for development, a hundred and ninety six townhouses under project SB twenty oh eight. As with the previous project, we did advise them to be prepared to talk about the tax value they do expect to generate. Mr. Tucker Ennis from Lennar is here, I think, along with some others, to answer any questions that you have. And again, the ordinance is there for your consideration, number fifty three twenty six.
Any questions, Mr. Trezenberg? If we recognize the applicant at this time, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Beth Blackman with Timmern's Group, fifty four ten Trinity Road, Suite one oh two, Senior Project Manager with Timmern's Group. As Mr. Trezenberg stated, Tucker Ennis with Lennar is here in support of this annexation. So this project includes a hundred and ninety six townhomes on just over forty five acres with amenities and approved open space, including a pool, clubhouse, dog park, and playground. The project has moved through the staff approvals of subdivision and construction drawings. Actually, it was back in twenty twenty originally, and it's gone through the permit process with the town, city of Raleigh, and Wake County. So construction is underway, and the homes will be started this fall with the first sales anticipated in early twenty twenty six. There are two different townhome collections proposed. Hundred and thirty three units will be the designer collection, which is a two-story product with an estimated sale price, based on today's market, of three hundred and fifty to three hundred and eighty thousand dollars each. The homes will be about sixteen hundred to two thousand square feet with three bedrooms and one to two car garages. The other collection is the club collection, and there are sixty three of those units, those are three-story units, with a square footage of nineteen hundred to twenty four hundred square feet and three to four bedrooms with one and two car garages. And those units will have a sales price, as of today's market, of three hundred and seventy to four hundred and ten thousand dollars each. Tucker Ennis is here with me as well, if you have any questions for us. And I see Jeff pulled up the site plan for your review.
Do you have any questions for the applicant? Or for the town?
No, but I have an opinion.
Okay.
This is not directed at you, Ms. Blackman, at all, because this land was already zoned. I feel about this the way Mr. Dillinger felt about the other one, this is just god awful. It's already started, nothing's going to change, it's zoned for it, so when they run through there and all the retaining walls, it's got to be up. And that angle and coming down on traffic, that is one god awful ugly project. It ain't nothing going to happen that's going to make it look any better. Not directly to you again, it was already zoned, you did what you're supposed to do. God bless America, I'm sorry.
And this was on like twenty five years ago.
In the eighties, I believe, honestly.
Okay, yeah, it might have been even more. Well, I'm one of those people that thinks twenty years ago is like nineteen eighty, so you know.
For my town.
Well, I remember when Indian Creek came, and I understand it was rezoned in, so it was sometime in the mid to late eighties.
Right.
So it was rezoned before all of us.
Like forty years ago, then.
Yeah, because I talked to Mr. Trezenberg right up, I think in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one when it first came through. I just, you know, it's just the look and the appearance and the traffic because of the angle of the, heading north on fifty and at the hill. I know they got, they were on the turn lane, they were working on that, it's just, god.
Yes, there will be, there will be a left in, a right in, and then two exit lanes, you know, left in and a right out of the project.
They will pave in the right turn lane in early this week or last week. Yeah, anyway, I just, I feel about this the way Mr. Dillinger felt about the last one, it's so ugly, because it cleaned the land off, but anyway. It was rezoned forty years ago.
Been a great ski lodge.
Chris Matthews, anything you want to say?
Mr. Behringer? Mr. Dillinger?
Just a comment. The last project I penciled out is three point eight units per acre, does that sound about right? This one's four point five and higher value units. I could have come in and done another project and it would have been better than what we have. I don't, I mean, I don't have a question other than we need to look at what we're bringing into the town. We got two projects back to back that we clearly demonstrated with this project, if it were on its own, I wouldn't like it either, but it's not directed at you either. But in comparison to the other one, this one looks fantastic. So I don't have a question, I'm just baffled, that's my comment.
Good. Any more council comments? Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this application?
No members of the public signed up to speak for this one.
Okay, if there are no further questions from the council, then we close the public hearing and we entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll put it out there and we'll see where it lands. Mr. Mayor, I approve, we approve ordinance number twenty twenty five, five, three, two, six.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Matthews, seconded by Ms. Behringer to approve ordinance five two, five, three, two, six. Any discussion? Here we now prepare to vote, all in favor? State by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose?
No.
Yeah. So we have.
Call for a voice vote.
Yeah, voice vote on that.
Would you like me to call the role?
You can call it, yes, yes.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dillinger?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
No.
And Mr. Vance?
Aye.
But motion carries three, two.
Motion carries three, two, okay. Now down to new and old business. We have FY twenty six budget portal launch. Is anybody, Ms. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council, we are here this time, set time of year for us to open up our budget portal for community feedback and input into our FY twenty six budget. Just a reminder of where we are with our calendar, we started the process with our departments in December twenty twenty four. And we are now probably about, yeah, a little more than halfway through. So this serves as the initial opportunity to get public comment weigh in. We will then have another touch point after the budget is recommended on May sixth at the, at the formal budget hearing, which will be on May twentieth. As always, we have opened up a budget portal, I guess we shouldn't say as always, as we have done in the past few years, we have created a budget portal to receive this feedback. Our wonderful folks in IT have created a form for the public to be, to complete. You can scan the QR code for those in the audience or come back at a later date and pull this slide deck up to find that, it'll link you directly to the form. And we also have a landing page on the budget website for all of the FY twenty six information. Here is also a direct link to the public comment form, which is this first box right here. Once Manager Miller proposes the budget in May, we will then post that recommended budget here along with the manager's message on the website for the public to review and provide additional feedback. And so with that, we ask that council open the FY twenty six budget portal for feedback and comment.
Thank you, Ms. Warren, are there any questions from council members?
What do we have to do, do we say magic words or something?
Open the FY twenty six budget portal for feedback and comment.
There you go.
Sure. Good, okay, so do we have anybody on the, in the audience who would like to speak on this particular topic?
No individuals have signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, well, just I would like to say the town encourages members of the public to provide written comments through the FY twenty six budget portal.
And I will add that it is live, and we will keep that portal open until we adopt the budget in June.
Yes, I'd like to also add a formal hearing is tentatively scheduled for May twentieth, twenty twenty five. Thank you very much, Ms. Warren. Next on the agenda is zoning text amendment, ZT twenty four zero two, stormwater requirements, nitrogen control. Ms. Harris, will you please give us a staff presentation, please?
Good evening. I have for you tonight ZTA twenty four zero zero two, which is stormwater text amendments. We've discussed this on a couple of occasions, so it should be familiar, but just coming back before you tonight for a vote on this topic. This stormwater text amendment, as a reminder, is taking a few elements of our nitrogen program that are currently written in the nitrogen program, which is an attachment to the UDO and placing that language directly in the UDO enabled, which enables us to enforce those items more, more easily. And there are four elements that you see in the text amendment there. A couple of things to draw your attention to, following the planning commission meeting where we discussed this item, we made a couple of minor changes to the language for clarity based on their questions. So you'll see in section O, where it used to read that at project closeout and or certificate of occupancy, all engineered stormwater controls and public storm drain infrastructure shall be submitted to the town of Garner for review and approval. We've added review and approval to confirm construction is in accordance with approved plans and stormwater controls will function as designed, just to clarify what that review and approval is in reference to. The other change was in section Q, which previously read, private property owners shall submit annual inspection records and SCM certifications or any maintenance that is needed with a maintenance plan for that maintenance, which is admittedly redundant. So it's really just a rewording there, it now says annual inspection records and SCM certifications or documentation of required maintenance and an accompanying plan. So no changes to content necessarily, just wording changes for clarity. And the other piece I wanted to discuss briefly is when we spoke about this at the public hearing on February fourth. I know Mr. Dillinger, you brought up a comment about the detention of the one hundred year storm, which is something that we've talked about as a change to our stormwater program. And we've met and discussed that. As a reminder, in our UDO currently, we require detention of the one, ten, and twenty five year storm events by all development. We do have a stipulation that allows the town engineer to require detention of the one hundred year storm at their discretion. So we currently are able to require that on as much or as little of the town as we deem fit. To this point, we have identified a few areas of town where we have downstream flooding concerns and have identified those for areas that we have required that one hundred year detention. So one thing that we are doing now is just taking another look at that to see if there are areas we need to add based on more recent drainage complaints, see if there are additional areas we think it's appropriate to add that stipulation. Also, sometimes it's a case by case basis, so it's something that we'll keep in mind as we review development plans if there are particular sites where that seems like an appropriate approach. One thing that we do want to caution against is we've been in conversation with some of the folks at the state and at NC State who do research on a lot of these stormwater topics. And there's some detriment to over detaining water as well, because it really changes the natural flow patterns of the water compared to when you get a storm that naturally runs off a site. So the recommendation is generally rather than to require, you know, larger ponds to detain higher level storms, we really look at ways to implement more of a nature-based or green stormwater infrastructure approach where the goal is to really mimic natural conditions as much as possible. So get the water back into the ground, recharge the groundwater table, have the water end up where it naturally would as opposed to just ending up in a catch basin in a pipe down to an outfall. So we're taking a look at that now, that's something that is going to take us some time to develop, but engineering foresees developing a toolbox of sorts of different recommendations that we can provide to developments and, you know, to you all as you review these rezoning requests and development requests as recommendations for things that can be done that make a meaningful impact to the water quality and flooding in the area. So we would propose at this time in, in light of desiring to get this text amendment approved so that we can follow through on some enforcement cases currently pending, that we will defer any changes to a future amendment if that's what needs to be done and continue to work on that toolbox for enhanced stormwater control. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then we are just looking for your consideration of approval of this text amendment tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Bottomless Matthews, any questions?
And in your notes, you do say that however, due to some legislation limiting the ability to require additional stormwater management, et cetera, et cetera. So there's some things that we can do and cannot do due to state law.
There are, similar to when we look at, you know, transportation improvements, we run into the same issue sometimes. There's only so much that we can require development to do. There are a lot of ways, and I've been talking to some other municipalities about how they're handling this as well, to incentivize a lot of those things. And so I think that's one angle to work on it, is if it's, if there are things that we can't necessarily require, there are ways to incentivize those items as well.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, just a question on like the toolbox, is that in the form of a policy or a rubric? Because I think even a common sense approach of we need hundred year flood retention, if we're going to be rehabbing a gas station with contaminated soil in the watershed, like what are some of the criteria we're going to use? like what are some of the criteria we're gonna use for, um, making these professional decisions?
Sure. Um, I, I don't know that I know exactly what it looks like yet. Um, we're in those stages of brainstorming. Um, but there are several different criteria we would look at on a site to decide. So we look at things like where it is within the watershed. Um, you have sites that are up near the top of a watershed, um, where, you know, the mouth of a stream begins. And then you have those that are further down. And, um, detaining water toward the top of the watershed is typically more important. So those are sites that are more important to have detention because there's a lot of potential for downstream impacts if they're not detaining. In comparison, at the bottom of the watershed, if you're right near the lake, sometimes it's better to not detain because you get the water out of there more quickly, so the things that come from upstream have, have time to get down, and you're not making all of those peaks coincide. Um, so location in the watershed, and then we of course have the, um, the protected watershed, which is our water supply watershed. And there, we're not as concerned about the quantity of water that's running off as we are the quality of the water. So it's really focusing on, um, you know, especially in sites where there might be need for remediation, but really any site requiring testing of the, the, the ground and any potential contaminants in the area that they're siding a stormwater device. So we make sure we're not encouraging those to leach further into the groundwater, um, and requiring those devices that provide for better water quality treatment as opposed to higher level of quantity treatment. Um, so the, things like that would play in, and that's why it really becomes kind of a site-by-site prioritization.
I mean, I guess just the recommendation would be to prioritize the watershed and don't wait to get your whole list before you decide to implement. So that we're taking care of the most sensitive areas and property, downstream property considerations, too.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And there, um, fortunately are a lot of measures already in place uh, because of that water supply watershed designation where there are different stormwater controls required in those areas because of that designation. Um, and also, one really beneficial thing is Garner has actually been very proactive in stormwater management for a long time. And so we're one of the few municipalities who allow no development within jurisdictional floodplains. Um, and we have done that for quite some time. Um, and we also have that fifty-foot conservation buffer outside of the floodplain. So we're a lot more conservative in our allowance for, in development of floodplain and those sensitive areas than a lot of other places are, which is helpful as well.
Thank you.
Any more questions from council? Uh, do we have anybody, uh, in this, in the audience that would like to speak, uh, on, on this particular ordinance? Seeing none, we will ask for the adoption of this ordinance. Um, is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Singleton and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Any discussion? Hearing none. Prepare to vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
Now down to committee reports. Uh, do we have any committee reports from the council?
Oh, okay. I'll do HR. Uh, Mr. Vance and I on the HR committee are continuing to interview, uh, applicants for various vacancies on boards and, uh, advisory boards and committees in the town, and we're hoping to have some recommendations come next month. We've got a busy month ahead of us, so.
Yes, we do. Uh, any, any other that I'm missing one? Okay, managers' report?
No reports this evening, sir.
Attorney, report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, I will be attending the government and public sector, um, section of the national, uh, the North Carolina Bar Association's Spring Continuing Legal Education Course this Thursday, the third. I know I was just at a conference. They just fell in the, almost in the same week this year. Uh, but Ms. Gibbs will be available in my absence.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a closed session?
No closed session this evening.
No closed session. Council reports?
I just have a question, uh, about, a question about the power poles on Garner Road that are paired, old power poles that are broken or damaged, and they're still attached to the new ones. And do we have an update on when those will be removed?
Um, Ms. Behringer, I don't have an update, but we have reached out to Duke Energy to make them aware and try to schedule that time. So I'll follow up with Mr. Jones and find out exactly if we've got a timeframe for removal.
And one of those that I spoke to you about, um, by email the other day, I said there were two. There's actually three grouped together in one spot, a, a very short one, an old one, and then that looked like it just was cut off and left, and then a one that's about two-thirds the size of the original. And again, it cut off and left and attached to the current new pole.
So certainly, we will follow up with that and get a timeframe for removal.
Any more reports from council?
Every, I, yeah, um, I have a question for the town manager on this. I'm gonna call the shovel, shovel and ladder tool. This, is this project gonna dig us in the hole or get us out of the hole? This cost of needs assessment by project, what's the timeline for finishing it, piloting it, using it on projects that we've already approved and have hit the ground so we can actually see with case studies what the result of these projects are? Where, what's the timeline for that? I know we're in the middle of the budget, but we have these projects coming at us, and we're not doing the analysis. It will make future budgets harder.
Certainly. Uh, we actually just met, um, as a, a staff team to finalize, um, the tool and the process. So I would say within the next thirty days or so, we'll be able to use it, provide it to developers, and have that information available in terms of decisions coming forward for council.
Will we be able to look at it and evaluate it before you deploy it?
The, the tool itself? Certainly. If council would like to take a look at it, um, and provide any final comments before we start using it, we certainly could do that.
And, uh, again, I, I don't think, I think a better, if you have a tool, you need to test it on data before you throw it out to developers. We have a lot of projects that have been approved over the past six years that we have ready data on what the actual tax generation they are compared to other uses. I, I'd recommend piloting the tool internally and bringing those results back to us so we can see how it works before we send it out into, even as a beta, to developers.
We can certainly do that. That's gonna add some time to, to the process. Um, when we had decided to roll this out, we had, um, as a, as a staff team had talked about doing it as a pilot to be able to gather the information, be able to use it, but also test it to see if there is opportunities for improvement and how we continue to, uh, make the tool useful. But if, if council certainly has an interest in wanting to do that ahead, uh, providing it to the development community, we could do that. It's just gonna add more time before we start using it.
Yeah, I think the testing should be done on existing data projects. That way, it actually should, could shorten the time because you have a finite number of projects you can evaluate, and the data's already there. You don't need to guess. So, um, it'd be helpful if in the next, by the end of the week, kind of a timeline for the development of this and maybe send out some of the results of some of these other projects over the next, by the end of the month. Um, just to see if it, if it's doing what we hope it will do, um, and be a useful tool when we deploy it.
Certainly.
Thank you. That's all.
Any more questions?
Uh, sorry for being tardy tonight. Just dealing with some of my father's medical issues.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Any, any more questions or concerns for the night? I would just like to say before we adjourn, thank you all for the opportunity to sit in, in the mayor's position as Mayor Protem did on this evening. It has been an experience, uh, one that, that I don't take lightly. And just the confidence that you had in me tonight is greatly appreciated. And now we'll move on to the adjournment. Can we entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Behringer, seconded by Mr. Singleton to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion on that?
Not debatable motion.
We could, and I say, I wouldn't hear you, you know, I couldn't part-funish you at the beginning and sit here. I can make now. I can say, we can do it after some discussion.
All in favor? Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose? Ayes have it. Have a good night, everyone.